There we go. So, let me call the special city council meeting for the city of St. Helena for October 30, 2018 to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Grabry.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Coverstein.
Here.
And let us rise to say the pledge of allegiance. Vice Mayor, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to begin with a moment of silence on account of the Jews that were killed because there were Jews at the synagogue in Pittsburgh. Public comment would be limited to the people in the public, not the applicants wishing to comment. I don't see anybody here for public comment, so we can proceed to consideration of the candidates for Parks and Recreation. My understanding is that we have two, Mr. Fescora, who's here, and Mr. Feeny, who can be available by phone. So, my suggestion is we begin with Mr. Fescora, and you can take the podium. If there's anything you would like to advise us of, please do so, and perhaps there'll be a question or two for you.
Thank you. This is a much more formal happening than when I was on the Park and Rec Commission several years ago. It's more like a job interview. Anyway, I've been a resident of St. Helena for 41 years. If you'll notice from my application, I've served on the Park and Recreation Commission for about nine years, back in the mid-'80s to the mid-'90s. I went from there to the Tree Committee for five years. I first got interested in parks with the city of St. Helena in the early 1980s, when the St. Helena Beautification Foundation built Stonebridge Park at the end of Pope Street. And since that time, I've been interested in our parks, and that's why I applied for the commission years ago. I have a background in landscaping, design, construction, management, installation. Early in my career, I worked for five different park departments for short periods of time, so I'm very familiar with what goes on in parks and how they function. I don't have a lot of background in the recreation end of parks from a professional point of view, but I am a tennis player. I try to play two or three times a week at Crane Park. I'm applying for this position because a few months back, I attended a Park and Rec Commission meeting for something that was on the agenda, and I noticed that they were short one person, that they were looking for a person. I thought about it for a while, and I also observed that the makeup of the commission, they didn't seem to have anybody with a real park background. So, I'm applying to fill a position and to maybe give more balance to the commission with my park background. That's all I have to say. If you have any questions, please ask.
You stated it very well. Are there any questions?
I have one. When you said you worked for a number of different parks, was that in other cities as well?
Oh, yeah. I worked, when I got out of high school, I worked for the city of Burbank during the summer, and then I went on to college, but I worked in park maintenance. I worked for the county of Marin when I got out of college. I thought I was going to go into park work. I left there to work for the city of Fremont. I've also worked for a short while for the city of San Mateo, and where's the fifth one? Was that four? Oh, I worked at the city of Davis when I was going to school. I worked with their street tree program. Anyway.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
I just had one question. You have to look to your right.
I did.
Because you have an emphasis and a love for parks, I'm wondering, you know, if money was not an object, what your vision would be for St. Helena parks? You could tackle that in any way you want. I just kind of want to probe that a little bit more because of your vast amount of interest in this area and background in this area. I'm kind of curious as to how you see where we're going with our parks and what can be improved and so forth.
Well, I'd like to see the maintenance improve, and it appears that with the current staff you have, they are trying to make inroads in that. I have thoughts that I could help them with, shortcuts they could take. I would also like to see more land preserved for parks, but not developed at this point in time. I'd like to see our parks better maintained before we develop anymore. But I've been looking at the park and open space element of the new general plan, and I'd like to digest that further and maybe have us acquire other properties, open space, but not develop them.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do you want to see if you can get Mr. Feeny on the phone?
Jeff?
Yes. Hello?
Just one minute.
Okay.
So, Mr. Feeny, if you have a statement you'd like to make, please proceed.
Well, first of all, good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor and council members, and thank you for taking the time to give me the chance to apply for the Parks and Rec Commission. Unlike the gentleman who just spoke, I don't have the same history in parks and development and things like that, but I think he mentioned one item that we share in common, and that is, when I walk around the parks, what I see are parks that need to be better maintained, better beautified. I would agree that, given the current staffing, we probably are lacking the ability to do that. And on the Parks and Rec Department Committee, what I'd like to do is look at our parks and make them better, just make the basics work, make the water fountains work, get the weeds trimmed, put the bark in where it needs to be, and make them more presentable. I think that we have some great parks that we can beautify for fairly low cost. I think there's some capital improvements that could be made. But overall, as a, you know, a member of this community, I'd like to see the parks be better. And the gentleman that just spoke before, I didn't catch his name, but it sounds like he has that same vision, so whatever helps our town is, sounds like a good idea to me.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Feeny?
I was wondering, Jeff, if you were planning to do all that yourself?
I can bring my kids out, we could do something. I can't promise it'll look better.
You have a team, I know. I'm just kidding with you.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
So, how do you wish to proceed here, Mr. Foppola? Should we, do we go through the process of council discussion on Parks and Rec, and then go through the straw vote process at this point before turning to the Planning Commission? Or do you want to turn to the Planning Commission applicants first?
You're going to be doing the straw vote at the November 13 meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, today is just for the interviews.
All right. All right. Very good. All right, so let's turn to the Planning Commission. Hold on here while I... So, okay, so I think I see Mr. Hale. Would you like to speak to us?
I've met most of you here and there in different ways, and I've, I'm assuming you've seen kind of my background, so I don't want to necessarily run through all that, but I welcome the chance to answer any questions you may have. I'd like to just sort of lay out that, I mean, we moved here in 2001. We've had a business here downtown. We've had a business out of our home also. We've raised three kids here. So, we've been kind of dipping in to the, from different points of view into this community. And I, sort of in recent talks, we've been kind of throwing things back and forth and decided it was sort of time to sort of put our oar in the water to try to get this, to try to make better some of the situations that we, you know, tend to just complain about and see what we can do about it. You know, I think we're, I think the city's at a critical point where I think some decisions that we make now are going to have a pretty hardy impact as we move forward. And I'd like to, I'd basically like to bring the kind of insights that I've gained kind of by engaging in different parts of this, as a community member, as a parent, as a, somebody who's helped out with, you know, kid things and community events, and also done work here. I've been before the Planning Commission. I know what it feels like. And I think it's, I think it's kind of important to have some insight as to what the process is like, what the, how important it is to be prepared for when somebody brings something before the Planning Commission, so that I think unfortunately, it can sometimes come off as flip or kind of reckless when people don't, aren't informed about a project, you know? And as an applicant who's brought things, and you have to explain kind of certain points that were in the packet, that were in the, you know, I find that, to me, is a perturbing circumstance, you know? I think, and the way these things go, you know, you throw your thing out there, and these are, these are personal projects, a lot of, you know, everybody, as soon as they bring something to the Planning Commission or you guys, it becomes all of a sudden a very kind of personal, emotional sort of, you know, you have things at stake, you know, whether it's investments or just, you know, goals that you have. So, I'd basically just like to see what we can do. And, you know, I think we have a lot of opportunities in this town that we can harness, that we can, you know, and I think growth and, you know, sort of sensitivity to what we value here, you know, can be joined together. You know, and I think there, you know, there are a lot of different points of view of how we best do that, but I think we have to be willing to sort of work together and, you know, hear different points of view and come up with the best solutions. So, any questions?
Are there any questions of?
I have a question. I don't know if you've been following, but we've been trying to make some of our processes more friendly and easier, took a lot of things off the Planning Commission plate and made them administrative decisions. We're still going to look at the design guidelines. I'm wondering if you have had any interaction with the draft design guidelines, what your thinking is, or how you see it fitting in the whole process.
I mean, I think we participated in the workshop that they did, which I think was interesting. I think habitually, my experience has been, whether it's a project that we've brought forward or a project that I bring for a client, I think understanding the code is an important facet of both when you apply for something and when you're on the other end, kind of deciding what to do about an application. I, I think it was a, it was a good incremental step to move, or to sort of lessen the engagement of Planning Commission, you know, and make some uses, you know, if, my general view is if somebody is applying for something that's within code, I think most of your work has been done. You know, I think there's, you can argue code, but not, to me, in my view, on an individual project. That's not really the purpose of Planning Commission. That's, to me, that's not their, you know, I think there's a venue for changing code or if you have issues with certain aspects of a code, but I think if an applicant endeavors and researches and pays professionals to come up with a proposal for a project, and it fits all the guidelines of code, and not every, the code is not always congruent, I think, you know, there, and that, to me, is maybe one really legitimate purpose of Planning Commissions, where, you know, some of these, the edges of code don't necessarily sink into each other. It calls for some interpretation, you know, and judgment, which I think is reasonable. I think the, every, we started working with like Carol Poole, and then Greg, and then the current kind of planning staff, and I think we've got a really competent planning staff. I think we've had, actually, a series of kind of competent planners. I haven't always seen them supported, you know, when they recommend a plan, they generally more, they generally know more about the project than the Planning Commission folks, or that's what I've, my experience has been. You know, they've sat down with the applicant, they've really kind of researched it and kind of examined how it fits to code, how it fits to this, and what the potential issues are, and they generally, you know, will recommend for or against. I've seen things where, you know, where it can go off the rails on a single kind of issue, sometimes to good, to good effect, not always. So, you know, I think, I think if we can, I think limiting some of the micromanaging that's gone on with Planning Commission, I think is a good idea. I think I, as to Main Street, I'd like to see more of that, because I think as a way to combat or kind of counter the current impression that St. Helena's business is unfriendly. I think if a business can come here and engage with the planners, with the city's staff and get a clear idea of what's possible here, without kind of getting engaged in a six-month expensive process, I think that would be an improvement. And I think, I think it needs, things like that need to happen. I think part of the solution to that would be reexamining the, you know, the use permit process, the, that I find kind of very, you know, uneven and very, can get, you know, I think properly marshaled, people can fight a project. Sometimes I think that makes sense, other times I think it's really not kind of proper use of our process.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you touched on some of your personal experiences in front of the Planning Commission and also representing others, and I hear what you're saying there. I sense a little bit of frustration, so I want to take that a little bit further. So, it's a body of five people, and I'm wondering, how do you translate that frustration and that experience? And maybe the word is not frustration, you can use whatever you want, but I'm sensing that. How do you translate that as one individual into a group where you have five people looking not only at the codes, but the more discretionary aspects in terms of design review? How do you bring your skill set to a body of five to make it better?
I mean, I think the, it's got to be kind of a team effort, but I think each person's going to come and bring their skill set to the fore. I mean, I design things, I make things, I presented things to the Planning Commission before. And I also understand that, you know, each person on the Planning Commission may have a bent, a sweet spot that they, that's very important to them, you know, whether it's water or, you know, there may be all sorts of things that I think legitimately people bring, and I think all you can do is try to intelligently and respectfully make your points, pose your questions, point out where you've, if, you know, if it's clearly within the code, I think it's important to point that out and put value to that. I think, I think it's a committee, so the best thing you can do is make your pitch and do it respectfully. You know, I think, I think the tone is important. I think we all bring our points of view and our experiences and our insights, and we, you know, hopefully can empathize with what other people bring. And I think, you know, the job is basically to kind of consider these different points, and at the end of the process, you have to vote yea or nay for something.
Have you given any thought to our short-term rental ordinance and how it's working and how it can be improved in any way?
I have. I think it's, my general thought is it's, it's a, it can be, I mean, as far as a force in the neighborhood, I think the way it's implemented has, is kind of problematic. I think if you're going to, if you're going to do it, I think you do it, or you don't do it. I think it's, the way it's implemented now, you know, you have to get approval of, you know, or can't have half your neighbors against you, and then, you know, periodically, they can re, you know, reexamine. You know, I think there's, there's clearly been lots of locales where that, the unintended consequences of that, that kind of a ordinance, or, you know, where you allow short-term rentals, can have unintended consequences on the rental market, on just the availability of housing. You know, I think all those things, and I don't see St. Helena being different than that. I mean, we have limited number of shells that we live in here, and, you know, I think each, each space that opens up, you know, and you have, you have to consider what that does on the hotel side, too. You know, I think it's, I think a thoughtful approach. I think the way it's implemented, my general thought is just that it's a bit problematic, I guess is the, I just see, I'd like, I'd like to see more policies that don't pit neighbors against neighbors, or that encourage neighbors to talk to each other, instead of, you know, I think some of the, some of the policies that we have tend to kind of foment the divide as opposed to sort of promote better neighbors. You know, I think, I mean, there are certainly concerns that people have, you know, with a steady flow of people coming and going, but I, I guess that's a mixed bag, is my, you know, because I think, I think there can be, you know, as somebody who's, somebody who's living here, who has the opportunity to supplement their ability to live here, I think willy-nilly shutting that down isn't necessarily a good idea. But, you know, the neighbor who's frustrated with a steady flow of strangers coming and going, and that don't have to be there two days after a party, I mean, I can understand the concern there.
Just switching gears, but somewhat slightly related, on the housing, affordable housing arena, have you thought about what policies that the Planning Commission undertake to review or implement to improve our affordable housing stock, our workforce housing stock?
I mean, I think one, one thing that always I come back to, when I, whenever I go through one of, a process of building something here or with a client, you realize how expensive it is. It's expensive to build, just the cost of building is expensive, and then you layer on top of that the cost of permitting, of impact fees. And inevitably, at every one of these meetings, you know, there will be also certain talk or discussion of affordable housing. And so, you've got this, on the one hand, the policies here make it so expensive to build that the idea of affordable housing becomes kind of a perverse kind of notion. You know, and part of that is just the desire of people to be here. It's a supply and demand, people will pay a lot to be here. I don't think the city can afford to think that this is the only place that you can be and that has things going on. I think, you know, I'd like to see the city kind of mindset be that we have to start competing, you know, and we have to be sensitive to the cost of building, of undergoing any of these processes when you apply for something, and you have to pay somebody to negotiate the process. I think that's, and then, and then, and then have to listen to the lament of affordable housing, you know, while you're in that process and getting kind of check fatigue and getting kind of worn down just by the cost of it. I think it's a tricky thing. There's only so much space here. You know, I think we, my general thought from a, from a building standpoint is that we, doing small piecemeal projects may not solve the bigger picture. You know, I think we've got, I think there's affordable housing and there's workforce housing. I think they're both, they're related, but I think they're different issues. I think they're, from a community point of view, from a restaurant point of view, from somebody who has employees here, or somebody who wants to have employees here and wants them to live close by, that's a workforce housing issue, you know, and I think the housing stock here isn't And I think the housing stock here isn't really set up for that. You know, so if you want to do that, you're going to have to think about apartments, you know, or multi-unit buildings. Combine that with the cost of actually building something, I think you have to... You have to... You come to an understanding pretty quick that you have to build efficiently, and you're going to have to build more units than two here and three here, and, you know, and then you're up against also the sort of NIMBY problem. You know, everybody wants to talk about affordable housing until it shows up next door to them, you know, which I think, to me, is unfortunate, because I think the reality is, you can have a bad neighbor. You know, that may be from any slice. And the opposite can be true, too. So I think, you know, we have to either decide that we're committed to this, and part of that commitment is going to be to make the sell job to the people that don't want it in their backyard, because it's going to be... If you're going to solve it, it has to be, it's going to be in somebody's backyard. The city only has so much space.
Let me switch gears. Let's talk about City Hall. I'm wondering, because you're a designer, you probably have all kinds of ideas about City Hall, whether it should be where it is. I mean, our council's moving forward on where it is. But in terms of the design, or the notion of having a public use and potentially a mixed use, do you have any thoughts about City Hall and its design and use?
I've given that some thought. My first impression was putting it where it is. I think it's, in its current configuration, is completely sort of lost opportunity. I think I talked to Mark Presswitz about it, and his kind of vision for it, and talked about a multi-story and kind of less footprint and maybe a, you know, rooftop thing, and I thought, well, wow, that starts to become an amenity, as opposed to a kind of wart, you know, on Main. And something that would engage with the park, I think, to me, the important thing would be the kind of consideration of kind of maximizing the enjoyment and kind of capacity of that park space, you know, and engage on the park space, as opposed to... You know, right now, the park is kind of not engaged by any of its immediate kind of neighbors. You know, the most engaging building on there is the WC, is the, you know, the toilet. You know, everything else kind of ignores it, you know? And I think there's great opportunity to take the piece that's to the south of it and have that engage to the park and get the, you know, get the owner of that slice involved in engaging his front of the park, which would be an added amenity to him, too. You know, so I think if you could kind of... I think if you could holistically sort of examine that whole thing, I think you could come up with it. Do I think City Hall needs to be on Main Street? I'm not sure. You know, I think if it becomes an amenity, a community use kind of thing, I think that makes a much better argument for that. You know, and it's, you know, certainly it's a civic pride thing, it's a flag that waves to the bigger world out there, that this is what... You know, so I think it's important, what you... The way that's handled, you know, whether it's... Trick, I guess, is just taking the resources that you have and best coming up with a solution for that, you know, because we can talk about all the cool things we could do if we... You've got to be able to actually build it.
I don't know how busy you are in St. Helena with your practices right now, or what it will be, but it does occur to me that you may face potential conflicts of interest. I don't know if you've gauged that. Of course, people say that about me and my law practice, so we all have to sort of look at that, and are you going to be on the Planning Commission more often than off the Planning Commission because of recusals? And have you thought...
I have thought about that. I mean, I mostly, at this point, are... My work is either design work for people elsewhere, or custom work for different clients. Here, what we do most, and we do it every few years, is a project that is basically our house. I certainly imagine that I'm going to have to excuse myself when I bring that to the Planning Commission.
I think you would have to recuse yourself anyway.
You know, it... You know, of course, that makes sense to me. I think the community is so small, I think you have to be able to make decisions and face your friends. And I don't think you're going to recuse yourself for every relationship that you have. You know, I don't think we could do anything here. I mean, we've got kind of different circles of acquaintances and business contacts. I don't expect that... I think the only place where I envision that is my project, you know? You know, because I don't... I don't think you're being a... I don't think you're really usefully kind of, you know, taking up that space if you have to bow out at every other event, because you know somebody or you're a neighbor of this person, especially in this town. I mean, you...
Thank you. Others may have other questions. I appreciate your candor.
So if you're appointed to the Planning Commission almost immediately, you are going to be reviewing, hopefully, the final, final general plan, and then turning around and doing some pretty major zoning ordinance changes to jive the two together. How versed are you with the draft general plan that we've only been working on it for 10, 15 years?
A long time. 10 years.
Mythical general plan? I'm not as... I guess I've probably gotten jaded, like a lot of St. Elenen, or, you know, folks around here, about the general plan, you know, because it's been coming, or it's been this, you know, thing that's been promised. So my general approach was more, let's look at it when it really shows up. You know, because it's just been kind of in this engaged, possible process. You know, I think it's long overdue, you know, because I think we've been... It's been kind of this ghost that's been hanging out here that we have been talking about on this issue or that issue, that we're addressing that, but we haven't. You know, so I think we need to get it in place, so that you have a working thing that you can work off of, not a sort of projected mythical potential sort of thing. So I mean, I look forward to it.
It's out there at City Hall, so go take a look in draft form, and the EIR is there, too.
Ken, I think it's going to be pretty exciting, being able to be part of putting together the new zoning codes that will match the general plan. So, yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
I just have one thought. In your work in other places, do you see models or processes that you might be able to introduce here, or to show us, that might be more efficient or more functional in your work?
Sure. You know, when I... You know, it's... I think you have to look at different... I mean, Napa County is one, is a different animal than submitting something to St. Helena. St. Helena's, you know, this is kind of the first, this recent kind of reorganization down there is the first time that we haven't contracted out and sent plans out for approval, which I think is terrific. You know, I think just from a point of engagement, it's a lot more user-friendly to drop it off and know that this person, and this person, and this person are the ones actually reviewing it, as opposed to sending it to, you know, some other, you know, kind of very anonymous and twice-removed company. You know, and we have, we've had a building department through that whole process. So, you know, to me, it's terrific that we're actually using them. I don't... I think Napa, just as a local comparison, is much more user-friendly, you know, from a submission process. Part of that is, I mean, I understand that the folks at the desk at City Hall are kind of the... They're the interface. I think when you ask about a project there, and you get a... I think it would actually be helpful, and I'm not exactly sure who it would come from. You know, this isn't something the Planning Commission would necessarily influence, but I think to get those folks that are in that interface to understand that they are... They represent the city. To, you know, when folks come in there, whether it's a business, or it's somebody who's trying to build something, you know, it's very... It's really important that they interact positively and accurately and...
Optimistically?
Well, I think optimistically would help. I mean, I think they've... My sense here is that we've improved quite a bit, the interface. It's not snarly. And it has been snarly in the past, and part of that was just mood, or there wasn't really anybody to interface with. You know, there was a period there where we lost, you know, staff. I think if we can keep... I think staff continuity helps with that. You know, it helps their mood, and that's reflected in the way they interact with people when they have a question, when they drop something off. You know, I think it's... It would be nice, it would be useful and helpful if you can get them on the team to understand that the... My view is that the city needs to overcome the sort of impression is that this is the city that says no, you know, to any number of things. I think that impression is based on a number of things, but I think it's become this kind of reflexive kind of response, you know, that... And I think you're a lot better off explaining to people what they can do, and go from that point of view. I mean, certainly, you have to tell them what they can't do when they're trying to do something they can't. But I think there's a lot to be said for sort of building that team and get them to understand that they've got to kind of put their oar in the water and rebuild this impression of the city, too. You know, we've lived in different, you know, work we've done other places, you know, I've seen areas that are, you know, tourist-driven economies and very valued also local economies and local places to, environments to live in, and I've seen how they can work together, that if they don't have kind of this at war with itself kind of dynamic that goes on, you know, you can embrace the idea that you are, to some degree, tourist. Tourist is... The tourists are an impactful energy source here, you know, and they can be... And I'm not just talking about money, it's... It can be a sense of, you know, civic pride, it's... There's a lot of, you know, but I think you have to look at them not as the enemy at the gates. You know, it is what it is. This community attracts people, you know, because of what it is. You know, and I think you have to... You can embrace that without... And it's not giving in to the... Doesn't mean that you're not preserving or not valuing the assets that we have. I think we have to fiercely protect what we have here, but we have to make it approachable. Any other questions?
I just have one follow-up question. One of the things on our list that we haven't gotten to this year was the idea of a pre-application conference with the Planning Commission for people who are proposing projects. I'm a big proponent of it, having been on the Planning Commission myself. People will come to the Planning Commission after they've been huddling with the staff for six or eight months, and suddenly, a member of the Planning Commission maybe has a question or raises an issue. I'm wondering if you've had any experience with that, if you think it would be a good idea, or maybe a road we shouldn't go down?
So this would...
It's a non-binding.
Kind of a second pass? You'd have a first pass and a second pass?
Yeah, very early on, first pass, so if there are issues, it would be a non-binding process that you would be, as a planning commissioner, you know, giving your input. As an applicant, you'd be getting input. Do you see any value in that?
I guess I see more potential pitfalls than value. Or what I would worry about is setting up a dynamic where you open the gates to sort of design by committee. Art by committee, to me, rarely is successful, you know? And I think last Planning Commission we attended, which it was interesting, because it was the first one I've attended with the idea that the empty seat, if I'm in that seat, how do I interact in this thing? And it was a project that quickly kind of seemed to me kind of went off the rails and became this thing where each person was suggesting what they do, which my antenna goes up on your question, just because that, I wouldn't want to see that. If that's the first pass becomes this, oh, I think you should do this, I think you should do this. I mean, I think, to me, I think the value of sitting down with... I think that happens with staff, with the planning staff, and certainly should happen. It doesn't always happen. You know, but I think, as somebody who's worked here, I think it's really valuable to sit down with our planners and kind of show them what you're thinking, and they will point out what the kind of likely pitfalls are. I'm not sure if adding a layer of five more people is going to improve that. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Ragio?
Okay. I'll probably keep this a little shorter. But thank you, guys, for giving me opportunity to apply here. I'm new in town. My fiancee and I moved here about a year ago. My parents have been in town for about 10 years. So I've lived in a lot of cities, I could say. Before this, I was at a startup in LA, before that, grad school in San Diego, and then Boston for about four years after college. So I've lived in some pretty cool cities. I was a San Francisco native. But I can honestly say I'd be fresh perspective. I don't have kind of the background on a lot of the issues you guys are facing, other than kind of what I've been reading in the paper for the last year. There has been a lot. So I'm eager to jump in and kind of give... I'm interested to jump in and kind of help out and basically get involved. So I'm an analyst for Sutter Home Winery here in town. So I think it's kind of funny, because design versus financial analysts couldn't get much more... Um, but I think the nature of my work, uh, kind of revolves around being in the details, getting comfortable with the weeds, and, um, I'm sure that, uh, a lot of that can be applicable to understanding zoning codes and things like that. Uh, so kind of brief background of, of what I do as an analyst, um, financial planning and FPNA is basically what the role's called. So we're a 20 million case business, or 20, yeah, 20 million case business and we forecast, um, every quarter, 24-month rolling forecast. And then, uh, once a quarter, my team looks at how we kind of hit our targets, where we fell short, um, and, uh, then we re-forecast for the next 24 months. Uh, so it's a pretty involved process that, uh, basically allows us to talk to many different asset, facets of the business. Um, so, yeah. Any questions?
In the time you've been here reading the paper, um, what are some of the issues that you think are, uh, out there that may come to the Planning Commission or that just interest you, that make you want to apply for this position?
I think, um, if I could, if I could put a, um, kind of a silver lining through, or, uh, if I could point to a common thread between a lot of the issues, it's how do you manage growth? Um, and that kind of sprouts up in a lot of the issues that I've seen. Uh, and I think there's a way, I don't, I'm not saying I have the answer, but I'm, I'm interested in getting to the answer of, uh, basically a way to, to manage growth where we're not, you know, um, doing damage to the idea of, of St. Helena as an idyllic small town, uh, but also keeping Main Street occupied, um, keeping the, the buildings filled, um, increasing vacancies, things like that. Um, so I'd say that's the thing that I'm most interested in, in this Planning Commission is how is, in, in terms of this seat, can I help, um, manage growth for this town?
Okay. Any, any thoughts on, um, how we handle tasting rooms downtown and the number of tasting rooms, the type of tasting room? You're in that business, you, I'm sure you've thought about it and probably even read about it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, uh, definitely read about it, definitely thought about it. Um, you know, it is a tricky wicket because on one hand, we need the tourists, or not need the tourists, but tourists, as it was pointed out, are a great energy source for our community. Um, on the other hand, we don't want that to be the one, um, kind of issue or, or the one kind of defining, um, force in our, in our local economy. So I can kind of see both, both sides. Um, my thought is, you know, I'd, I'd take an approach to that question like I would to a lot of the questions, whereas I'd, I'd kind of analyze the different sides from an unbiased opinion.
Mr. White? Questions? Mr. Ellsworth?
In your, um, have you lived in, in a small town before or, uh, growing up or have you experienced a small town as opposed to a city before?
Well, going from LA to San Diego, they would call that a small town. Um, but no, this is my first, um, and that's kind of one of the reasons why I wanted to jump in and kind of get involved, just because that, to me, is an attraction. Um, you know, you get to work with, uh, you know, in a council like this, you get to work with people that you live and you see at the grocery store and things like that. Um, so now to answer your question, this is the first time. It was a big adjustment to my fiance. We're getting married in four weeks, but she came from Chicago, so probably the biggest of all of us. So to a town like St. Helena was an eye-opener, but we're both, um, realized that we're fortunate to live here.
And you're making the adjustment to the difference in scale.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Ragio. Enjoyed listening to you. All right. Uh, I want to thank all the applicants for really an excellent conversation this afternoon. I think we all enjoyed it. Uh, I think we also learned from it. In any event, uh, I understand that, that the actual selection will be on the December 13th calendar?
November 13th.
November 13th. Oh, I skipped a month. Okay. Yeah. Very good. So, thanks so much.
Thank you for applying. Appreciate it.
Thank you.